Good evening, and we'd like to welcome everyone and begin the City Council meeting of April 24th, 2018. First item would be the roll call. Holly?
Bartlet?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieske? He is absent. Caravella?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Wessinger?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Duransek?
Here.
There are nine alders present.
Thank you. And the next item would be communications and presentations. We'll start with communications. Does any alder's have any communications? Alder Person Hirsch.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of actually the City of Stoughton Public Works, Sustainable Stoughton Healthy Lawn Team, Midwest Pesticide Action Center, and IPM Institute of North America, Stoughton Grows Green Day will be held on Saturday, May 5th. And this is a chance for everybody in the community to learn about how to grow their lawns with less pesticides, fertilizers, and any risk to your animals, wildlife, and children. It's gonna kick off in the morning at 10:00 a.m. at True Value, where you can learn about healthy lawn gardening and eco labeling and the program that the Midwest Pesticide Action Center is sponsoring. And then the city has decided that Veterans Park will be now pesticide-free. And so from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., there'll be lots of different land, sustainable landscaping games, presentations, and raffles that is coordinated by Midwest Pesticide Action Center and then the City of Stoughton, Sustainable Stoughton Healthy Lawn Teams and IPM Institute. So it's free, it's a great way to the kids to learn about healthy lawns and parents to learn about healthy lawns, so please come and all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications? And I have a few myself that I'll go through. First one is, is we recall the council approved the MOU for the access road for Highway 138, and I've been informed that the township will take that up on their May meeting, so once we hear from them, we can expect to hear from Forward Development again. I've had a number of meetings in the last couple of weeks. I did a training for the ALIS training, which is a shooter training at the school district on the 13th. I had a pre-construction meeting with Nordic Ridge for Phase 3 on the 19th, so they're gearing up to do some more work out there. I've also met with many people in the community and some of our organizations that support the city, and I'm looking forward to having some more discussions. Very enlightening, all the communication I've been getting, I appreciate it, and hopefully we'll continue to get more. Anybody else have any communications? Otherwise Attorney Dragney has a presentation for us tonight.
Well, it's really an update on the status of the historic preservation-related regulations that have been underway for about a year now. As many of you know, there are two different chapters of the ordinance that are involved. One is Chapter 38, which is under the, which is the Historic Preservation Commission-related ordinance. It's an ordinance that is really administered primarily by the HPC. Their work is done on that chapter, as I understand it, and I think that one is ready to bring to the council. I'm estimating, projecting that that will be before you on May 8th. The other ordinance is one that involves amending the zoning code and involves changes to the downtown design overlay zoning district regulations. My current estimate is that after I get reconvened with the Planning Department staff, just to find out kind of where the Plan Commission is with that process, my hope is that I can meet with the Plan Commission at their meeting on May 7. If we can finish our work at that meeting to the point where the Plan Commission is ready to proceed to scheduling a public hearing, then we could schedule a public hearing on that for June 11 and bring it to council on June 25th. So that's kind of my current hope, that we can be on that schedule for the zoning code amendments. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none. The minutes and reports are in the packet, and we have a public comment period, and we do have four people that's registered. One is registered in supporting of Resolution R-87. That would be Beverly Thompson is just registered in support of that. And then we have three others wishing to speak tonight, and the first person would be Roger Springman.
Still got my voice from the Earth Day Expo working against me right now, so I hope you can all hear me okay. Today I'm speaking as Vice Chair of RDA to Resolution 85 in your packet tonight, and that's the idle sites grant. Suffice it to say, based on what you just heard in the Finance Committee, those of you who are just here for that meeting, we're entering a really exciting period for the Riverfront project. And what's always exciting is having an opportunity to use outside money to assist a major project like this, and so this is especially why I want to make sure that we all understand the importance of voting favorable on tonight's Resolution 85. Gary Becker, our consultant, has done an excellent job at finding outside monies over the last many years, and he's done another great job for us here in setting up this grant opportunity. The RDA fully endorses a positive vote on this resolution. Having an extra $500,000 potentially available to invest into this 8.2 acre area is a fantastic opportunity. And Gary will be here momentarily if need be to answer questions, but suffice it to say that that kind of money for pretty broad flexibility is always a pretty unique opportunity, and I really don't want us to pass that opportunity up. So again, I'm strongly encouraging you to vote yes on this resolution tonight, so we can get this project down the road and getting people wet on the river sometime over the next couple of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. And next would be Carl Chenoweth.
Good evening. My name is Carl Chenoweth, 409 Garfield Street. Before you tonight in support of the Resolution 87, which asks for the city's participation and support of the proposal before it being presented by the Wisconsin Partnership Association and the Stoughton Hats Organization. As a, one of the primary sponsors of the Affordable, Dane County Affordable Housing Fund three years ago, we put this fund together to help communities like Stoughton and other communities throughout the county to aid community groups and nonprofits to bring together housing options for our homeless. I believe this is probably one of the key issues that I've been really involved with over the last five or six years on the board, and I'd really like to ask you for support of this tonight. This is something I think we've tried, we've been, actually, I was actually before you last year this time, and we've tried to really put together a project, the Hats Organization, to meet the needs of the community plus meet the requirements of the grant application. And the key element in this is support from the city leaders and the council for this. And I ask you to consider this as a primary consideration for approval, and we'd go forward with the project. Thank you.
And next to speak is Linda Mueller.
Hi, I'm Linda Mueller, 208 North Jertson, and I'm a member of the Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton, acronym HATS, which is appropriate because HATS believes that everyone deserves a place to hang their hat. Our team's mission is, includes advocacy and support for low-income housing, especially for families. And as all of you know, affordable housing is a nationwide problem, and Stoughton's not immune to that. Stoughton does have homeless, they're just not as visible as they are in larger cities. In Stoughton, it's often a situation of doubling up, and that's just not a stable situation. It's crowded, it's stressful, and it's a very temporary solution where families and individuals have to make multiple moves. And HATS is working in collaboration with Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development and Start Stoughton Area Resource Team. We've developed a plan which we feel will help to start to address the program of homelessness in Stoughton. We have a property and a plan that we feel is sustainable. We are going to be submitting a application to Dane County for affordable housing funds, and it would really be a strength to our application if they saw that the city not only verbally supported us, but also had some financial support. So I encourage you to pass Resolution 87. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all that we have registered to speak. If anybody else would wish to speak, they're more than welcome to come up at this time. And seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Jensen.
Second.
A second by Alder Person Duransek. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. That takes us to new business, which is R-85 of 2018, and that came from the Finance Committee tonight, so Alder Person Duransek.
Yes, I move R-85 2018 Resolution to approve the Redevelopment Authority's application for the idle sites grant for the Riverfront Development area, and I so move.
I'll second. There's a motion by Duransek and a second by Jensen, Alder Person Duransek.
Yes, this was approved by, or recommended by the Finance Committee this evening, and Gary Becker is here this evening to address this, give us a very brief description of what's included in this grant. I know that we had a discussion about this issue when we approved the bonding for the money to demolish the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building. There was some concern that if we demolished the building too soon, that we would maybe lose out on this kind of a grant. And Gary is here to reassure us that we have more than enough projects out there to use the half a million dollars that this grant would give us if awarded. So Gary, if you want to come up and just give us kind of a brief background.
Sure, yeah. The idle sites grant program was instituted to help cities like Stoughton address idle industrial sites that have been sitting idle for five years or more and are more than five acres. So we're combining, we're actually combining two sites, the Highway Trailer Site and the Milfab Site, to meet that five acre minimum, and Milfab is coming up on being five years either closed or underutilized. So we now qualify for this grant, and the, there's some flexibility in it, in that the purpose of it is to see idle industrial sites get redeveloped. And so the, there's a maximum funding of up to $500,000. It needs to be matched by another one and a half million of city expenditures. So we've got some of the matching, so we're asking for funding from WEDC, the Idle Sites Grant, to assist with any remaining environmental remediation and mitigation work that needs to be done. So where we, where we're at with that is that the DNR, once the Milfab buildings are down, completely down, the DNR will be coming in and conducting a Phase 2 environmental assessment, and we'll get a remediation plan out of that. A similar thing will happen when the bulk of the Highway Trailer Complex comes down, then we're applying for another WHAM grant to have the DNR come in and do that Phase 2 for that site as well. Once that's done, we'll have a good picture of any environmental remediation work, additional work that would need to be done. This grant would pay for that. We don't think it's going to be very much. We're also asking for money to pay for a new lift station to serve the new development down there, and then to help contribute funds to the Riverwalk and pedestrian bridge and riverbank stabilization along the redevelopment area. Now, the matching monies that will come into this are street improvements along East-South Street and Fourth Street, the remaining work related to the Riverwalk and the pedestrian bridge, and then the demolition of the Highway Trailer Building. Now, we're getting this in as quickly as we can, we're getting it in, this application in before work actually starts on the demolition of the Highway Trailer Building, so it should at least count as a match towards this. But we've got something like $2.3 million of matching funds, we only need 1.5 million, so we've got pretty good room to spare. I am meeting with the grant administrator tomorrow morning to, just to review everything, make sure we've got our i's dotted and t's crossed, and he's going to go down and take a look at the site, so we'll be, hopefully we can get this submitted by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. And before I open it up for questions, I just want to thank Planning Director Schiele for helping us with the completion of the application and for volunteering to be a participant going forward with the Redevelopment Authority and the plans on the Riverfront Development. I think that it's going to be very beneficial for the community to have Rodney's involvement, so thank you, Rodney. And Alder Person Jensen.
Just a quick question, Gary. Is there a time limit, I mean, a timeframe that we have to use the money in within?
Two years.
I'm sure we will. Okay, two years. It'll be gone.
Yeah, there's plenty of time, yeah. These things don't happen quickly, so the program recognizes that. Okay, any other questions? Alder Person Hirsch.
No, I just want to thank Gary and Rodney for really working on this quickly, and I really support this. This is what we need to get kind of jumpstart the Riverfront project to get some money in, so I would highly, I mean, I recommend supporting this. Thank you.
Any other questions? And hearing none. Holly, can you read the motion, please?
Sure. So there was a motion by Duransek, second by Jensen to approve R-85 2018, to approve the Resolution for the Redevelopment Authority's application for the Idle Sites Grant for the Riverfront Development area.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so that carries. Thank you very much. And the next item is R-86, which is another grant. This one came through Park and Recreation and also Finance. Who wants to kick this one off?
It's Finance, I think. Finance met this evening and recommends that the council approve R-86 2018 Resolution to approve application for stewardship grant through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and I so move.
I'll second.
Second.
I have a motion by Alder Person Duransek and a second by Jensen.
And Dan, Glenn is here to talk to you about what the grant would include.
Thank you.
Sure, so the grant includes, well, first of all, the cost estimates in your packet are from a draft, so I got the final concept plan today with the cost estimates. So the total item, total budget cost for this, you see up there, is $2,237,175. And that includes the bypass channel, which are the pools to the, I guess, west of Fourth Street Bridge, then it'll go underneath, and then it'll include two larger in-stream whitewater rapids that would be east of the Fourth Street Bridge. There's also inclusion of a standing wave at the dam where people could surf, spectator area just north of there. They'd also fill in the spillway area that would be now, because it doesn't serve any functional purpose where the powerhouse is, so it'd create more of a public plaza right there, and also a riverbank restoration and a Riverwalk and trail extensions. What's not pictured is there's also included in this is a trail along Stoughton Utilities and the Uniroil Site. So all the trails included, it's roughly about 2,000 linear feet, new trails through the downtown area. I would like to add that, you know, Wednesday, May 16th at 6:00 p.m., the engineer for the project, Gary Lacy, will be in Stoughton and be presenting on this too, so if you have any additional questions, he can answer them. But I need, I need a resolution to apply for the stewardship fund grant that includes half the cost of the project.
Okay, open it up for questions. I have Alder Person Duransek.
I just want to point out to council that, as Dan said, the grant would cover half the cost, and then we have very generous foundations here in the city, and he's been talking to the Bryant Foundation and also to the Madison Community Foundation, and we're also hoping that we can get some money from them. And then, of course, any improvements that abut the Riverfront redevelopment, that would be part of TID expenses. So while it sounds like, you know, wow, lots of money, if we can get these grants, if we can get grants from other foundations and some of the money from the RDA, you know, it really does help to bring those costs down, so.
The personal counter.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, how much time, once we're awarded the award, how much time would we have to build?
We would have to the end of the 2021 construction season to finish the project. There's, we have an option, according to the grant administrator, to file for an extension too, so we'd really have, you know, end of 2021, so it'd probably like.
Be the hard date?
Yeah.
Okay, I have Alder Person Johnson.
Dan, I've got a question. So when you say finish the project, is that just the project, like when you apply for a grant, is that put in what that project would be? It's not the whole thing if we expand it, right?
Yeah, just whatever I put into the grant application.
Okay.
So the fiscal impact needs to be updated in the resolution to reflect the cost of, the new cost, I guess, the actual cost that I got. So that'd be $1,118,587.72.
You know that by heart?
I wrote it down.
Could you, Dan, could you repeat the total amount that this estimate was?
Sure, $2,237,175.43. It includes everything you see on that screen except for the pedestrian bridge from the redevelopment site to Man Park. There is a smaller pedestrian bridge on the southwest corner that would give access to fishermen to the dam area.
Okay, so I believe I'm looking for an amendment to include that amount into the motion. Would somebody care to make that?
Sure. I'll make the amendment that the total amount for the resolution is $2,237,174.43.
I'm not sure that's what was intended.
It's $1 million.
So, yeah, the fiscal impact would be $1,118,000, because it's half. That would be the city's cost share technically, with, you know, if there is any other grant funding or.
Can you repeat that number? So that's the number we need on the amendment? Is that what we're saying? Okay.
Well, can I just ask one more?
Sure.
Because I think I heard Alder Person Duransek indicate that part of that cost might be part of the redevelopment area project, which would be potentially a TID expense or part of that redevelopment project, so I'm not even sure, I'm not sure, is that correct?
Yeah, because you, part of the improvements would be part of the redevelopment project. What isn't covered by the grant, the other 1.1 million could come from other funding, and the RDA would probably be funding part of that.
Heard of that.
And that would be in our, you would see that reflected in the TID budget, which we will be presenting in the near future to go along with the concept plan.
So then the fiscal impact, the city taxpayer, would be 1.1 million less of any RDA or TID funding that is made available to the project. Is that correct?
Yeah, so like, it would say on the grant application, like the city cost share would be the 1.1 million, so that's what the fiscal impact would be.
Okay. I like up to 1.1 mil. Well, if you need to say 1.1 on the grant application.
Well, you can say up to, because we can do cost engineering later on during the project, you know, that's what the steering committee would be for, and then, as long as it doesn't change the actual grant application, we can do that.
Okay, so the amendment is for up to?
Up to, was it 1.11858722, is that what you said?
72.
72.
Okay, so then we'll need a second on the amendment.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have an amendment by Hirsch, seconded by Duransek. Any questions on the amendment? Okay, hearing none. Should we, should these be roll calls? Yeah, we'll do this by roll call.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Caravello?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Westinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duransek?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
That motion passes, so then we would have an amended motion on the table, or, so we're looking, looking to approve the motion as amended, and that motion was, can you read that again?
The original motion was to approve R-86 2018, approving an application for a stewardship grant through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
With the amendment attached to it. Any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll vote on that, roll call as well.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Caravello?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Westinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duransek?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Okay, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dan.
Seven.
Pardon?
Eight, nope, so seven.
Okay, so there's a request to do number eight, and then, so skip number seven for now, we're going to go to number eight, which is R-87, and that comes from Finance Committee as well.
Yes, Finance Committee met this evening and recommended approval of R-87 2018 Resolution to approve the request for city participation and contribution to partner with the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development, Stoughton Area Resource Team, and the Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton to support development of rental housing for families to address homelessness in Stoughton, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Duransek and a second by O'Connor, and we have some guests here.
Yes, we do have some guests who, from the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development, if you'd like to come up. But what I would like folks to know that. But what I would like folks to know, that the recommended amount in this resolution is for $15,000 to come from contingency. And right now, our contingency fund has $77,000 in it. And so it would not be needed until at least this fall. So I just wanted to give you folks that information.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name's Kathy Camp. I'm the Executive Director of the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development. For the last several years, we've been working with HATS, the Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton, to develop a project that would address homelessness in Stoughton, particularly among families and school-aged children. As the Finance Committee heard earlier, right now, there's approximately 71 homeless children in the Stoughton School District. And the project that we're proposing here would provide four units of housing that would directly target that family population and try and place some of those homeless families into housing. And we would provide not only housing, but work would start to provide wraparound services, case management services, so they would be supported as they move through from housing and into some stability that's provided by housing and also the case management services. The Wisconsin Partnership last fall purchased a property in the 300 block of Pine Street. That property includes a single-family home and a vacant parcel. We will soon begin the rehab of the single-family home and that, that home will be sold. The rest of that parcel, we're hoping to divide off, and that would be the site of these four units of housing that would be developed. The Wisconsin Partnership would be the owner of that property. We would do property management and we would work with START and other support organizations in Stoughton to provide the services that those families need to be successful. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think there was a description of the project provided in your packet and it demonstrates that the need is there and what we intend to do with it and how we'll finance the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Alder Person Duransec.
Yes, I just want to make sure that people understand that this organization has been doing this work for 40 years, and so-
I just want to tell you, I haven't been doing it for 40 years.
I didn't mean to imply that.
I have gray hair, but.
Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did want to make an amendment. We talked at Finance on that this, the awarding of the $15,000 would be contingent on the successful awarding of the, of the application. So I think we should insert that into the, into the resolution.
I think it's on the bottom of the resolution, if you go to the next page.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit, I know at the meeting, but upon further review-
Okay.
Maybe we'd want Matt to look into that a little bit.
Okay.
What's the grant application that we're talking about? No, I have it. At the very bottom, it says, "Be resolved by the Council. The City of Stoughton authorizes proper city officials to send a letter in support of the grant application." What grant application is that? Is that for the home funds?
Yes.
Yep.
And then it says, "And authorizes $15,000 from contingency account to support this project." And what you're asking is that the $15,000 be, the appropriation of that or payment of that be conditioned on the award of the home funds?
Yes. Yes.
So if you want the resolution to say that, then I would say, I would modify the, that last paragraph to say, "authorizes proper city officials to send a letter in support of the grant application, comma, "and authorizes $15,000 from the contingency, comma, "following the award of the home funds or Dane County Trust Funds grant, comma." Now I'm confused again. Two different possible grants? Says home funds or Dane County Trust Funds?
It's one grant contingent on it being, you know, accepted, basically. They don't get the $15,000 unless the grant is accepted.
So why doesn't it say, why don't we say then, "And authorizes $15,000 from the contingency account, comma, "following an award of other grant funds in the amount of not less than $200,000, comma, to support this project."
Works for me.
That's what I moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Good.
That's an amendment by O'Connor and a second from Duransec. I see people nodding back there, that's okay?
I'll leave, okay.
Okay. Any questions on the amendment? Hearing none will vote on the amendment. And we can do a roll call on that, I suppose.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Caravello?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Westinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duransec?
Aye.
Okay, so that takes us back to the original motion as amended, any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call on that as well.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Caravello?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Reevesinger?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Duransec?
Aye.
And that motion is approved. We're going to skip down to item number 13. We have some folks that are here for Resolution 91, and I'm going to turn that over to Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to present Resolution 91 2018, a resolution to approve the lifting of the council-imposed demolition moratorium for 217 South Van Buren Street, and I would so move.
Second.
So there's a motion by Jensen, a second by Duransec, and a little louder, Greg, oh, I'm sorry. Got it, thank you.
Got a little background on this. Received an email from a couple that own this property and through, I guess, heirs, they, they did not understand that there was a demolition moratorium that would cover their home, and they're just asking for us to lift that so that they can complete the project that they're starting, replacing an exist, or what was an existing garage, which was in bad shape. And it was, it was, it has already been taken down, so there would be a, we'd have to do a post-demolition-
Permit?
Permit, I guess it would be, yeah. And hopefully, we can, can help them along. They obviously know that they made mistakes, so they're looking for our consideration on this.
Okay, thank you. My name is Director Shield, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think I tried to capture it in a summary that's included in the packet. So once the demolition moratorium is lifted, then we can process the proper demolition permit and new permit to install the detached facility.
Alder Person O'Connor?
Rodney, do you anticipate issuing any ordinance violation citations?
Most recently, we certainly can, but I think the recent change to our permit fee structure requires us to double the fee upon these situations where it's a post-activity. So I think that seems justification in this case.
How much is the fee?
There's a demolition permit and a construction permit. I don't know, under $100 each, I believe.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Johnson?
The couple is here for, if you, anybody wants to ask them a question.
Anybody have any questions for, for the property owners or anybody here? Hearing none, I guess we'll vote, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that passes. Thank you, Greg. Okay, so that's going to take us back to item number seven, and this is one that came through Personnel last night. Alder Person Reeves, you've been really quiet over there tonight.
Resolution 92-2018, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Proper City Officials to Approve Option B for the Finance Director Position Description Update, Department Restructure and Hiring of a Finance Director. Personnel Committee Approve 4-0, I move to table.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion to table, and the rules say that there's no discussion on an item that's for tabling. So I guess we'll go ahead and take the vote. All in favor of the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so that item is tabled. You should expect that to be coming back. I think we're going to try to schedule a special meeting to address that issue so we can get that job posting completed. The next item would be R 87. Nope, we did that one, R 88. And that's coming from Finance Committee again, you're busy.
Okay, the Finance Committee met this evening and recommended approval of R 88 2018, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Proper City Officials to Write Off the 2011 to 2016 Delinquent Personal Property Tax Bills that have been proven to be uncollectible for a total amount of $12,011.38. And the Finance Committee recommended this, and I so move.
I'll second.
And I think Tammy can address this.
Duransec and a second by, I think, was it Jensen? Second by Jensen. Anything else, Denise?
Tammy can address.
Okay.
Everyone should have received a copy of the proposed listing of all the different businesses going back to 2011. A number of these have multiple years because they may or may not have been closed at that time. We can write off those that are closed now, and we can also go back to 2016 and recover the costs from the other taxing jurisdictions, which we did receive those fundings, and so we're ready to write off the portion that belonged to the city. So there is a total of $12,000 roughly that we're looking to do. We do this annually, and we do keep a very good track of who is outstanding because we recently did manage to receive over $40,000 in back payments that we had been waiting for. So unfortunately, we can't get them all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. R 89 comes from the Planning Commission, which would be Alder Person Bartlett.
The Planning Commission bring forward Resolution 89 2018, Resolution Approving an Extraterritorial Jurisdictional CSM Request by Tim Thorson for Property Located at and Adjacent to 3318 Quam Drive, Town of Dunn, Dane County, Wisconsin. Planning Commission approve 6 to nothing on April 9th, make a motion approve.
Okay.
And a motion by Bartlett and a second by Hirsch. Anything else, man?
Just the standard, since we have extraterritorial jurisdiction, just the standard, they want to combine two lots that are relatively small lots along the lake north of us, so anything else Rodney would like to add?
Our ordinances have provisions to allow this size lot to be created in the ETJ, subject to the town approving it as well, and that's what we understand is the case.
Okay, just for some of our new members, maybe just kind of explain how that works a little bit, either Rodney or Attorney Dregney, I think that might be helpful.
Explain extraterritorial plot approval jurisdiction?
Please, yeah.
Okay. I'll give you my best shot here. So we, there is an area called the Extraterritorial Plot Approval Jurisdiction Area that's around, I believe it's a mile and a half around city boundaries. Within that area, if someone wishes to obtain approval of a land division certified survey map, a plat, for example, one of the bodies that needs to take action on that is the City Council. However, over time, the scope of the city's authority has been narrowed up quite a bit. So these, as a practical matter, have become rather kind of pro forma reviews by us. If the kind, there's a very narrow range of authority that we have that includes, for example, if we know that we need additional potential right-of-way, I think we can require that if we're planning to widen the street in the future, something like that. But we have fairly narrow authority. I did provide, I think, a memo some time ago to the city that provided a list of do's and don'ts, or what we do and don't have authority over. And if you're ever interested in seeing that, we can get that back out to, to all of you again.
This is a do.
This is a, this is a we have to say yes one, I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions on this? Otherwise, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that one carries. Item number 11 is R 90, which comes from me. I have some appointments that I'm hoping that you'll approve tonight. So I'm looking for a motion for appointments to these commissions and committees.
So move R 90 2018.
There's a motion by Duransec.
Second.
And a second by Hirsch. Any discussion on any of them? Hearing none, I'd just like to thank those that have offered their services for these commissions and committees. There's just a few positions left, so I'm really pleased that the community has stepped up and helped us so we can make sure that we can continue to conduct our business. Hearing nothing, all in favor of, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, those carry. Thank you. Item number 12. And this one involves replacing my seat as District One Alder Person, and I think Attorney Dregney is going to maybe walk us through this process.
Sure, and there is a memo in the packet that outlines what the council's options are and what the procedure could be. I'll just address that, each of those items briefly. First, options for filling the vacancy. There are four options outlining the memo. One is to leave the office vacant until a special election can be held in April of 2019. The reason I call it a special election is there will be an election in April for local seats, but this particular election will be considered a special election because it's to fill a vacancy. It's not to, because it's filling a vacancy, it's deemed to be a special election. So you could leave it vacant until April, or the council could appoint someone to serve until April, at which point successor would be elected to serve the remainder of the term. Or, we'll call that the, those the April options. Or we have the November 2018 options. And again, that's either leave the seat vacant until you have a special election in November, or appoint someone to serve until a special election in November. We could call those the November options. And I'll just stop there before we talk about procedure, because I don't know, Holly, did you have a chance to look into cost differences for those?
Yes, so if you were to do the April election, we already have local races on the ballot for that election, so that would be no additional cost for the city to do that. In November, we don't have any local races on the ballot, and in that case, we don't pay anything for our ballots. The county pays for those costs.
For that, for that ballot?
For that ballot.
But if we add a special election?
So as soon as we add something onto that ballot, the city would have to pay half the costs. And I guess, I don't know, it's going to be a, there's going to be lots of participation in that election. So the costs, I don't know, could be anywhere to $1,000 to $2,000. I would also just kind of point out that if there were to be a primary for that, that would be in August. That primary is a partisan primary, so that's the primary where you pick your party, and then you have to stay within those lines. I've talked to Dane County about it, they're not really sure how the ballot would work out for that, I'm not sure either. But the Elections Commission says it can be done.
I think it would be a separate ballot in-
So, yes, people would come and they would probably get two ballots, which I think would be very confusing. I think it would be confusing for our office as well. We're already going to be very busy with early voting, but it could be done.
So with that, so the, there's going to have to be a special election, either in April or in November, and you just heard about the considerations for that. With respect to filling the vacancies, with respect to appointing someone until there's a special election or leaving it vacant, that's up to you, you could either leave it vacant until- You could either leave it vacant until the special election, or appoint someone to fill the vacancy until that time. If the council chooses to appoint someone to serve until that special election can be held, the council has the authority to decide what procedure you want to do or use to do that. There is no specified legal process that you have to follow to do that. The practice historically at the city has been to get the word out, that the city intends to fill a vacancy through multiple ways of getting the word out, provided, you know, I'm not sure what all the different ways are, putting it on the website, asking, hopefully having some information in the newspaper about that and so on. And then, I think the process has been whoever has responded indicating they're interested in being considered, has been interviewed by the council at a meeting, and then the council has voted and selected the person that it wants to appoint. That's the process that's been followed since I've been city attorney, I guess, but you don't have to do that. You could choose to follow that procedure or develop a different procedure.
Okay, thank you very much. I had Alderperson Jensen, and then Hirsch.
Yeah, thank you. I believe that the process that we've used in the past has, has served us well. I see no reason to vary from that, so I would make a motion that we follow that process, which would be, which would be to select someone as, using the, using the same process that we had where we would recruit and then interview and make a vote to appoint someone.
To, to serve until November or April?
To serve until April.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jensen, a second by Duransek. Anything else? Alderperson Jensen.
I'm saying.
Anything else to add to that?
That'd be fine.
Okay, then I had Alderperson Hirsch.
Nope, he stole my thunder. That's exactly what I was gonna do, is make a motion to appoint someone until April two thousand and nineteen, using what we've done before.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments about how that, Alderperson Duransek?
Yeah, I, I think that if we, you know, we appoint someone, we want to give them enough time to figure out if in fact they want to run for reelection. And I think that giving, it, it looks like it would be, you know, a decent amount of time to, to let them get a good feel for what it is to be an alder, and if this is something they want to do. So, you know, obviously, I support appointing someone and having them have a, a special election in April of two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess the only thing that would be helpful to add to the motion would be kind of the date that you want to target to bring candidates back to the council so that people can be told, you know, you need to.
We usually have like, have to be two weeks notice or two weeks?
Yeah, we notice them twice in the hub for two weeks.
If we look at it that way.
Probably the second meeting in May.
Yeah, probably the second meeting in May for the appointment.
I thought it was like a thirty day notice that we had to give.
Usually it was just two weeks.
Well, I.
It, it gets posted twice in the paper.
I can also recall that we've had at least one situation where we had to extend the time, because we really, there wasn't enough time for people, and there wasn't, there wasn't any interest expressed initially, and so there was an additional time period, so I don't know.
Extend it out and just say the May twelfth election, or May twelfth meeting.
Uh, May fifteenth, you mean?
June twelfth.
That's a long time, that's a whole extra month.
So today's, we got the next one. I guess it's, you know, what's your pleasure? I, you know, I think if we do it two weeks, we can get it back here on May fifteenth. But that's at the pleasure of the council, whatever you'd like to do.
May twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Time we could get it in the paper though, Holly, not until next week, right?
So I won't be in the office the rest of the week this week, but next week I could send it, which then would put it in the paper the following week.
So that would be, it would be first in the paper the week of?
It would be first in the week of, yes, so it would be published May tenth, and then again, May seventeenth, so then it could come before council on the.
Twenty-second, actually.
Twenty-second.
Yep.
That seems to be interesting. I don't know. That seems to be pushing it. We.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I would like to, to give at least thirty days so that, you know, people, you know, have an opportunity to, you know, really, you know, kind of think about it, and you have to fill out an application. I mean, I just filled out that application not that long ago, and I mean, it took me some time. I mean, I, I put thought into it. And so, you know, it, I'm not sure if that's actually enough time. I mean, I would like to see a, like a thirty, you know, thirty day period in which to get the word out and let people think about it and, you know, look at the application, figure out if this is what they want to do, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
No, that's just my opinion.
Sure. Alderperson Jensen.
The, well, today's the twenty-fourth. May twenty-second would just be two days shy of thirty days, so.
It's either that or June twelfth.
Yeah, June twelfth, and to me, it doesn't really matter that much. I'm, I'm open to either one, it doesn't matter.
Well, so the motion on the floor doesn't include a date, so somebody needs to make an amendment for a date.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, I think that gives people enough time.
Okay, so there's a motion. Does it need to be an amendment, or can you just add that to it?
Why don't we, was there a second to the original motion?
Yes.
There was.
Why don't do a quick, why don't we do a quick motion to amend to June twelfth by Jensen, second by.
How about I, how about I rescind my motion and let somebody else do it?
Okay.
Wait, do a quick motion to amend.
Okay. Motion to amend to include the appointment date of June twelfth.
Okay, so the motion is to add the date of June twelfth. Is there a second by Duransek? Any discussion on the date? Hearing none, all favor of June twelfth, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That takes us back to the original motion as amended. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion with the amendment, say aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That carries, and that takes us to item number fourteen, which is discussion and possible action regarding Planning Commission composition. And this was an item that we talked about last year at Community Affairs, Council Policy, and then there was a recommendation by that committee that went to Planning Commission. Planning Commission, I believe, talked about it at two meetings, and then it kind of fell through the cracks. It never made it to City Council. As I was going through and doing appointments, a light went off in my head, and I said, hey, we never voted on that at council, so that's why it's before us tonight. So I don't know if Alderperson Reeves, you want to kind of walk us through it, or, or Matt, or Attorney Dregney, I mean, whoever wants to.
Well, I can give just a little bit of background, and it's, it's pretty straightforward in the packet, but essentially there, I believe it was Alderperson Mieski, initially in the, when we were talking about council goals, suggested that he had some concerns about the Planning Commission essentially, you know, not necessarily representing all the districts. Does it have too much power? Is there enough input from every district? And so we talked through that. Rodney came to the meeting and gave us some idea just about, you know, some of that history. And so essentially, what we thought might be something to consider is if each district were represented. And for instance, if you look right now on the Planning Commission, District One is not represented, so we thought that might be a way to, to compromise. Now, the ordinance does not support that right now, I believe, and so we'd need to change the ordinance. Am I right about that?
Yes.
And then I understand it went to Planning, and I think it did not, it was not approved. So maybe you can give some background on your thoughts.
Yeah, it went to Planning, and then we talked about the Standing Committee that Alderperson Mieski had asked for, and didn't see it necessary because we're already, they were already just implementing zoning codes, so that's how the council has authority over the Planning Commission, by implementing the zoning codes, and they just, all they do is implement them. So we discussed that, and we discussed the composition as well. Had some questions about whether more were allowed than seven, because the state statute called for seven, and allowed for one more specifically if you were near a military base, and allowed for one more if you wanted to add the building inspector. I, I believe the city attorney, I don't, you weren't at those Planning Commission meetings, I don't remember if you, I think Alderperson Truel said you gave an opinion that we could add more.
Yeah, this, this statute gives the council the authority to vary from that by ordinance. If you want to provide for a different composition, the council can do that by ordinance.
Okay, and Rodney had something to add?
I was just gonna reference the meeting that I attended with the CACP. I think I recall outlining a number of actions that are actually needing to be confirmed by council. So there's a number, there's very few items that the Planning Commission has the final authority on, although the Planning Commission obviously works through a, a number of the, the technical details. I should also just highlight the fact that our seven-member commission now has five new faces on it. So absent any changes here, we're already gonna have a radical character change of the commission, good or bad. There is a lot of differences that are gonna have to be brought, brought into, into the system and brought up to speed on a number of topics.
Alderperson Duransek.
Yeah, did you consider the mayor as representing a district? Because I kind of look at the mayor as kind of representing a district, and then the three alders can each represent a district. And my concern is actually finding enough people who are willing to, to serve on the Planning Commission. You know, if, we want to find people who have certain expertise, and they're not always that easy to find. So, you know, if we keep expanding it, you know, it's like, can we really find those folks? And then the other issue is, you know, the City Council already has, come on, folks, you have a lot of work to do. Many of you have full-time jobs, and to now add, you know, kind of another committee on someone, you know, it's, I think the seven members works fine.
Okay, I have Alderperson Bartlett and then Jensen.
Yeah, when this first came up, I was in support of it, but the more I got into discussions of it, I am against it now. We were talking more, the people on the commission are more supposed to have a little bit more background in construction or zoning codes, or a little bit of that experience so they can just implement our zoning codes. So that was an issue, is getting the qualified people on the, on the commission. That's always difficult to find, people have the time to serve. And then we were worried about more politics being brought into the commission. It's more of a regulatory commission. We were thinking that it's more just implement, and we don't want to get too many politics involved and just bickering back and forth and not getting done on the commission. So I'm not supporting change of the composition.
Okay, so Alderperson Jensen, and then Reeves, did you have any?
Thank you, Your Honor. I really can't support this either, the changes. I, I think that the Planning Commission is functioning well the way it is. I agree with Alder Bartlett that it would just seem to bring more politics into something that is more regulatory than, than, it, it just doesn't seem to be necessary. It seems to be a solution to a problem that we don't have.
Okay, and Alderperson Reeves, and then Hirsch.
And I would say, I, I'm Alderperson Bartlett, and I are probably on the same page. I started out initially. I think part of our concern was, first of all, it came to us as a goal to address, and so we wanted to, to think about some various options. And we did have some concerns, wanting to be sure that each district was represented because it, if that's what the council wanted. So we did want to bring it to the council. But I would be the first to say, you know, I, I think it may be a burden, a lot of us, as, you know, Alderperson Duransek said, it is one more committee, and I'd hate to have someone put on it from a district who either doesn't feel they have the time or the expertise just to fill that seat, and that's not, not useful. So I would say, I think I was initially in favor, but I couldn't support it at this time. I'm not sure that it's, I'm not sure it's necessary, so.
Okay, Alderperson Hirsch.
Thank you. I think initially why this came up was because at that time that, when Alder Mieski brought it up, it was heavy on one particular district that was represented, and probably maybe only two districts were represented at all. It was more heavy on one particular district, and so that was the problem. So this year, I think there's three districts that are actually represented, so it's actually more evenly dispersed. And if somehow we can have at least three districts represented on the planning, I think I'd be all in support. It's when it's loaded on one district that I think became the problem. So if somehow we can amend it, that at least, you know, the Planning Commission would, you know, contain at least three different districts, that would be great.
There's two ways to address that. One would be through an ordinance change. The other would be that the council actually has to approve mayoral appointments to the Planning Commission, so you have that check. If you, if you left the ordinance as it is, you would still have that opportunity to say, wait, we need, we need to have three districts represented.
And certainly when I was doing the appointments, I kept that in mind, and coincidentally, I'm in District One, so all the districts are covered. And so I, I do whatever the council wishes. The only reason I put it on the agenda was because it never got here, and it should have, and I'm not really sure what happened, but if, if there's other items that missed, I'll bring them forward as well. My question for the city attorney then is, we don't have a resolution or a motion on this, so what should we do with it?
If, so if the council doesn't want to make any change to the ordinances, and one, then, then there's nothing that you need to do. If the council would like the opportunity to consider a change, then I think it should do one of two things. Either refer the matter to probably the CACP committee to develop a recommended change to the ordinance for report, to report back to the council, or direct me to prepare an ordinance if you know what you want, and I can prepare an ordinance that says that and bring it back to you.
And my sense is that this group doesn't want to take any action. So if, if you do speak now or forever hold your peace, otherwise we have one other item on the agenda.
I make a motion that it's, is sent to CACP just to review it and see if we want to make that change to have at least three districts represented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Hirsch and a second by Alderperson Reeves to send it to CACP. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Wasn't very enthusiastic. Any opposed?
No.
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 I will take a real call on that one.
Can you read the motion? This is just for.
To send it back to CACP.
Just for splitting up the three districts.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Lee Singer.
Aye.
O'Connor.
No.
Bartlett.
No.
Duransek.
No.
Pardon me?
Three names.
Okay.
Did I miss someone?
Don't think so.
Okay.
So that motion passes?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes, so that'll go back to CACP, and then we'll probably see it at a future council meeting. Alderperson.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second by Alderperson Jensen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much.
No, you're going.